Welcome to the Monday, December 7th, 2020, Virtual City Council, Lake Forest City Council Meeting. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Pando Leon?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Karas?
Here.
Alderman Rummel?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Yep.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Gushkarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
And Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Would everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you. I need to make the following statement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is, this December 7th, 2020, city council meeting will be held remotely. The Q and A option Zoom will be available during this meeting, so please feel free to add any question you might have. First item on the agenda is reports of city officers. On behalf of the city council and city staff, please, please accept our wishes for wonderful holidays, our last meeting of 2020. Hopefully, by the time we have a meeting, our next meeting, which is January 18th, we'll be looking at significant distribution of themes and maybe a light at the end of the tunnel that's a little brighter than the one we're looking at right now. Hopefully, 2021 will be a more normal year and a better year. So, but please accept the, our best wishes for a wonderful holiday season to all. The first thing on the agenda, on my agenda, is comments by mayor. We, we need, we have a resolution of appreciation for the departing general manager of the Deer Pet Inn, Matt Barba. I'm going to read the resolution here. Whereas Matt Barba has been so much more than a friendly innkeeper at the Deer Pet Inn, and whereas six years ago Matt arrived in Lake Forest intending to stay only a short while to oversee the renovation of the Deer Pet Inn and to hire a general manager, but instead, after he was watching over the renovation and finding a deep connection with the inn, he stayed. And whereas Matt, for the past six years, has been the beloved innkeeper at the Deer Pet Inn, and whereas Matt's passion for the Deer Pet Inn, its history, its magic, its potential, and its important place where countless memories have been made for so many was evident from the beginning. And whereas Matt has touched the lives of all, has touched the lives of all who visited the inn, making each and every person feel welcome, pampered, and important. And whereas Matt cared for his employees deeply, he recognized their loyalty to the Deer Pet Inn, he respected them, and even though, even through a pandemic, assured that they valued him. And whereas Matt leaves large shoes to fill, his eloquence and wit, whether in person or Instagram, will be hard to replace. Whereas Matt is gracious and genuine, his love for the inn and his connection to the Lake Forest community is felt, as is the community's love for and connection to him. And whereas Matt, through his commitment to excellence, brought national and international awards to the Deer Pet Inn and missions to Lake Forest. And whereas Matt Barba will always be a part of the Deer Pet Inn and a part of Lake Forest. He leaves an incredible legacy, and for that, Lake Forest community will be forever grateful. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community and guests of the Deer Pet Inn hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude, along with a hearty cheers to Matt Barba for a public service loyally performed and congratulate him on his promotion. And be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed into Matt, copy to be included in the official minutes of the December 7th, 2020, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. And I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'm moved. Seconded.
Okay, roll. Call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
And Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. I understand Matt would like to say a few words, so if he could be promoted to, to actually participating in the meeting, it'd be great. I see him there?
He's here. He's here.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for your kind words and this gracious acknowledgement. It's the first of its kind that I've certainly ever received, and it's a heartwarming gesture, to say the least. Lake Forest is an idyllic backdrop, and it charmed me six years ago, just as it has with every guest of the inn the second they arrive. In my time here, I've met the most dedicated, most passionate people, who are loyal to this community like no other, including Abbott and specifically the chairman and CEO for giving us all this beautiful facility to operate and entertain in. It's been my honor and a true privilege to join the city in its mission to make the town the best it can be. Thank you for your unwavering support and friendship all these years. I look forward to visiting as often as I can.
I think hearty round of applause.
I have one question. Are you continuing the Instagram posts remotely?
I will have a, I will have an influence on it for some time, I think.
They're delightful, and how you come up with some of those things is beyond me. I incredibly invented, so we're going to miss you.
This year, we had a little more time on our hands, so it made it a little easier.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck in your new role. Good luck in your new role. Keep a close eye on the Deer Pet Inn.
I will, for sure.
Thank you so much, Matt.
Good luck, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. I really appreciate everything, especially you are such a good neighbor to the folks on Bank Lane. This is Jim Preschlack calling or talking. I just really appreciate your sensitivity to those issues and just being a great neighbor to everybody around you and obviously everything you did on your day job. But thanks so much, and God bless.
Oh, thank you for that.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Pete Seibert is going to provide us with a short video about some personnel changes and promotions.
Evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I got booted out there. Definitely been a challenging year. I appreciate you guys giving us some time here to spotlight some folks at the fire department. Two things tonight, you have Dave Tishni, 27 years on the job, retiring. And then we have a new member, Dan Rice, firefighter, just getting off of probation. So he finished his one-year probationary period. And, you know, we've all been challenged with coming up with ways to share these things with council and the citizens, so I really appreciate the fact you're allowing us to do these videos. Very appreciative of Mayor Pando Leon making the visit. We've been really cognizant of trying to follow all the governor's orders and wearing masks and keeping our crowd to the right size, so it's, it's just been a challenge, but I'm glad we're able to at least honor these people. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the fire department admin, Jamie Nixon. She puts these videos together and does an awesome job. I think the video speaks for itself and will give you a little insight on the two gentlemen. So if Mike could start it up, that'd be great.
Fulfill its vision to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Attention all locals, the Lake Forest Fire Department is announcing the retirement of firefighter paramedic Dave Tishni after 27 years of dedicated service to the citizens and visitors of the city of Lake Forest. Alarm number 202641 is firefighter Dave Tishni's last alarm and is now struck out on the orders of 4200. From the officers and the members of the Lake Forest Fire Department, past and present, thank you, Dave, for your commitment and service to the city. Lake Forest is clear at 06:55 hours, November 25th, 2020.
Thanks for giving us that time to spotlight those gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Well, it's well earned and well deserved, and I benefited from your leadership, Pete. We're proud to have new blood on the force, and we're also proud to send off veterans when the time comes.
Mayor, I just have a quick question for Chief Seibert. I want to know if Dan is the pastry chef that, that Dave was. I remember coming in and he had made some amazing-looking cake the last time I was there.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Dan's got those culinary skills. Dave definitely was the, tried out all kinds of desserts. Many of those were guinea pigs, some successful, some not so successful, but never a lack of trying.
Well, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Good luck with, we're, we're looking forward to seeing all your, all your crew getting vaccinated right away, as quickly as possible.
Yes, we're waiting for, for the details here, so we're hoping it'll come soon.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is Alderman Jennifer Karas is going to give us a quick update on the story of, the retail story of the week in Lake Forest, the Lake Forest Station pop-up shop.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of how things are going with Lake Forest Station. I, if I, I hope if you haven't been there yet, you're planning on attending or stopping by Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, actually, or Sunday. The store opened on the 27th, the day after Thanksgiving. It's open on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 5 o'clock. We, since we did open doors, we've been open five working days, and those five business days, we've had more than 55 visitors a day who have spent an average of about $85 a person. We have generated gross sales of nearly $25,000 to date in five days, so you can do the math, far exceeding our expectations. And, you know, I, I think back in September, we were at City Hall and talking about ways that we could, you know, think about how to support the business community, especially during this holiday shopping season. And a pop-up idea came up, and it was the mayor's idea to think about occupying the vacant space at the train station. It was really, you know, the right size for what we intended to do. So in addition to trying to generate some new energy to promote local shopping this season, wanted to do something that would be new and different and exciting for the community, to bring out, you know, the gracious and generous and, you know, just community that I knew that we, we live in, that has been enormously obvious. And then the third objective was to support nonprofits in the community. So the shop is representing 16 nonprofits. They were all eager to take part. They have branded merchandise, some of them like Reading Power and Mother's Trust have trees with items that you can purchase to support their organizations. Every nonprofit is selling merchandise. In fact, a number of them have already gone through the merchandise that they initially ordered, and we reordered, we're restocking. We have this, this collection of limited edition Lake Forest items that we've called Lake Forest Love. We've sold through a lot of that and have had to reorder it. The Mark McMahon mugs and puzzles that were ordered have been reordered. So again, overall, just a tremendous response, lots of enthusiasm. You know, I think the highlight for us, I've been spending a lot of time there with Susan McMahon, who we retained or hired to run the, the shop. We have students who are there volunteering and earning service hours, National Honor Society students from the high school, and from Loyola and from Woodlands, actually. And we have, each, each day that we're open, a nonprofit sort of hosts the shop and has representatives there to talk about the work that we. So it's just, it's been, it's been really great to see people interact and to ask each other, you know, just what, you know, what they're, what they're doing. And again, it's just, it's just been, it's been a lot of fun to create, a lot of fun to be, to be part of, and to just see the pride of Lake Foresters come in and, and want to purchase items so that they can support these, you know, extraordinary organizations. So thank you again to Mayor Pando Leon and to Jason for letting us execute this idea. I think that, you know, again, it's far exceeded our expectations. I don't know if we will, we close on January 9th. Everyone's asking, will you be, you know, do this again in some, you know, shape or form? You know, we'll certainly consider it if the numbers look good. You know, we know the response is there, the demand is there, so we'll, you know, we'll have to just sort of look at that more closely when we, when we, when we get to the conclusion of our, our run.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer?
I just, I just think it's remarkable, and thank you to the mayor and to Jennifer for executing this and to the city staff. It came together in, in what I saw, so quickly to get the volunteers in there to man it. There's even a bouncer at the door regulating how many people can be in at any one time. It's just fabulous, and I hope it continues, and I hope that maybe we consider occupying that space permanently for this purpose. I could even see it expand into the main train station if, when COVID is over, when they get more ridership. It's just fabulous and well executed. It's just beautiful. It's perfect in that space. I can't say enough about it. So thank you for doing it. The only comment I would make is, you know, maybe, because as I was shopping in there, I was looking at, you know, what, what items, what were from which not-for-profits. And it might be nice to sort of have a little blurb about each not-for-profit at, in front of where their items are, you know. So a little blurb about Mother's Trust, a little blurb about Wharton.
Have you received the, Melanie? Because this was a little piece that we did that is an insert that goes into every shopping bag, and it, it does, it has each nonprofit and their mission. So I'm sorry if you didn't receive that, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure I've received that, but it might even be nice to have their little blurb in front of their items as you're shopping, you know, where you might pay more attention to it, just a brief few sentences to identify the marvelous work that these not-for-profits do so that even, it might even motivate you to purchase before the fact to read the marvelous missions of these not-for-profits. Just, just a comment that you might want to consider, but just fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. You know, I, I was remiss. I really need to acknowledge the sponsors. Mark Pasqualezy, who is part of our, our working, marketing team, was terrific, and we came up, you know, we, we needed some, we thought we needed some startup capital because we just, we just didn't know, you know, again, what the expectation, or what the response was going to be. So I do want to thank the five real estate offices in Lake Forest, Griffith Grant and Lackey, Berkshire Hathaway Lake Forest, Caldwell Bank, or at Properties and Compass, who all, all, you know, generously provided some startup capital in terms of sponsorship for this venture.
Well, even better. I mean, someone had to think ahead to get those sponsorships. It was just executed so quickly. Fabulous.
Thank you.
I, I think Alderman Karas deserves most of the credit for this. This started with a little idea as part of the marketing campaign, you know, just ideas being thrown around. I think, you know, the idea was, well, we should have some Lake Forest swag, you know. There should be stuff you could buy with the Lake Forest logo on it or whatever, something like that. And she just, that, took that idea and just created this thing. It's amazing. So I'm absolutely delighted with.
Well, thanks. You know, nothing can happen without the support. You need to, you know, get it up and going. So it couldn't have happened without your support, Mayor.
Anyway, those are, unless there are other comments or questions for Jennifer, those are my comments, and I, next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. That's a tough act to follow, although I'm going to leave that for Mike Thomas to try to do, not myself. But just as a, as a quick introduction, you know, with the plunging temperatures outside, certainly we in, in city government know very well what that means, and we, we know it means snow season. And so we'll, we'll credit MT for the good luck and good fortune that so far we've managed to avoid snow, and if the weather forecast holds up, it looks like we might make it at least through mid-December without our first measurable snowfall, so we'll take it as long as we can get it. But, you know, in all seriousness, you know, the department is always well-prepared for snow season, but I think, you know, this year with the COVID pandemic, you know, that has made preparations even more challenging, but Mike Thomas and his team have really stepped up to the plate to, to prepare for snow season, both in entertaining, you know, COVID contingencies at a staffing level, recognizing that we will, for the second year now, assume responsibility for plowing operations on Route 60 and 43. And they're even incorporating some new technology to help better manage the crews out in the field. And so I've asked Mike to, to come here tonight and just provide a few comments to let the council and the community know how we're prepared to deal with snow once it starts falling. Mike?
Great, thank you, Jason. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. As Jason noted, we're happy to present this snow plan to yourselves and the community. This is something that we do on an annual basis with the Public Works Committee in early December, but we felt with the number of changes this year, especially with COVID, we wanted to share with yourselves how we have, what things we have done differently to get ready for this year's snow season. I know our city clerk, Biddy Boyer, went ahead and placed the entire snow plan, all 121 exciting pages in your Dropbox, so you do have the full, complete plan in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end. So Mike Strong, I believe, you're going to work the slides for me. Great. To begin, just the cover slide really, obviously, is a thank you to everybody that I work with. Dan Martin, Chuck Myers are superintendents, Matt Brigioni, Corey Wermar, street supervisor, forestry supervisor. Those are the four guys, the core guys, that work on this and really put all this together. In the end, it is one large team effort, is probably the biggest service responsibility that we, meaning Public Works and in the Parks, Forestry, Cemetery sections, have out of a 12-month basis, putting all this together. So Mike, if we can, with the, the next slide, please. So to share with yourselves and everybody at home, obviously, we have to approach the snow in a priority, priority manner. First and foremost, obviously, all of the city streets as well as 60 and 43. We then will make sure that we have here MS, the parking lot and the sidewalks, and city parking lots to include the train station parking lots and the platforms done. We'll put a power broom uptown near the east side train station. Gets very busy between Illinois and Westminster. And then we will obviously jump on to the sidewalks within a quarter mile of the schools. Those are the ones we do first. We then will branch out. We'll do all the remaining sidewalks as well as the bridge decks. Compost center, because we obviously have compost operations, the recycling compost center open on Saturdays. More importantly, we're actually going in and out of there every day with our recycling. We get the compost center plowed, then we'll move guys over to West Park, the ice pond, and then from there, we'll switch our equipment over, and if we need to, we'll start hauling out of uptown and the multiple parking lots. And if it's a bad storm, we'll need to do the same thing with the cul-de-sacs. I put a note at the bottom here that depending upon the weather conditions and the day of the week and the time of the day, we might adjust some of these things. From this standpoint, I'll give you an example. If we receive four or five inches of snow on Sunday afternoon, we may not bring guys in to do all of the parking lots until the following day. Part of what myself and Dan Martin really focus on, obviously, are the costs of this program as well. So we're very cognizant of the service level versus straight time versus overtime. So that's, that's on our mind from right now until it rains again in March. So Mike, next slide, please. The number of personnel we have, and I wanted to share this with everyone because it'll make a little more sense with my next slide, but for Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays, we have 35 full-time employees. It does not include sanitation, fleet, water plant, or cemetery. Obviously, those four days, sanitation is picking up garbage. Fleet is always working on repairs. Water plant, obviously, they're handling water plant operations, but they also will plow the sanitary sewer lift stations that we have throughout town. Cemetery is maintaining their own facility. That 35 full-time employees does not include vacation or sick time. So that number gets reduced if we get guys that are sick or out on vacation. On Wednesdays, we jump up to 44 simply because we put back in the sanitation guys. So it's, I've always said this every year, it's wonderful that we have sanitation in-house because about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we can pull the sanitation guys in and use them till 10 or 11 at night. Obviously, on Wednesday's weekends and nights, they can be used as well. And then at the bottom, we have seasonal employees, primarily in the Parks and Forestry sections. We have some in sanitation, building maintenance. We're lucky this year that they started later. They're nine-month seasonal employees, so their seasons will end at the end of January. So we're lucky to have 11 of them through then. Mike? This is the, what we call the lineup sheet. Before every snowstorm, we will sit down and go through this. Matt Brigioni, Corey Wermar will put this together, and you can see the detail on it. Not only the routes, the number of spots that we've got to fill, who's running Snow Command, who's going to be on call equipment-wise for maintenance, but this sheet really, when you think back to our numbers, we, we do not have enough personnel to run two full crews. So if we are going to get a heavy storm, we'll split the whole crew into two separate, two separate crews, and then we won't be able to fill the sheet out completely. It's just going to take us a little longer to, to respond to things. Mike, next sheet, next slide, please. This is simply just a list of the equipment that we have. I, I say this every year when we request city council's approval in January to purchase equipment. We're very appreciative of the equipment that yourselves and previous city councils have allowed us to purchase this with the various things that we need to do with the snow plan and the various sidewalks and parking lots and cul-de-sacs and ice ponds. It's, it's very nice to be able to have this equipment. It makes us more efficient so we can manage the snowstorm even as we had reduced the number of personnel back in 2012. So Mike, next slide. As our city manager noted, new for this year, we have purchased a software program called RasTrack, and we are actually right now putting all this together. This is something that for at least this first year, we are simply going to use in-house to help us manage the snow operation. So each truck has a. Each truck has a device that's being wired in. Um, and we now will be able to bring maps up in our Snow Command Office and we can bring up, for example, Truck Forty-six. Uh, forty-six is doing Whispering Oaks and Wave on Subdivision, uh, and part of VT, Vill Turkum. But we can see then where that truck was at, uh, and how long ago was he on specific roads. That will help us gauge when certain routes are completing their routes and which other routes are behind. We'll be able to much more efficiently, excuse me, move trucks around the city to, uh, to address things and get things done, uh, in a much more. Efficient manner. This is a system, as I noted, that's been used by the city of New York for many years and obviously many other cities throughout the US. Uh, but we're looking forward to using it. We will see how we can expand it in the future. As I said, at least for this year. This is just gonna be internal. We wanna, we need to see how the system works first. So thank you to Jim Shaw and the IT Department helping us out on this. Next slide, Mike. Uh, as Jason noted, uh, forty-three and sixty, this is our second year going into the program. Uh, it was a very successful year last year. From the standpoint that we had only received about twenty-one, twenty-two inches of snow. So it was a good opportunity for us to really try things out. The state paid us in full the ninety-three thousand dollars. As you can tell by this chart, when I accounted for everything, straight time, overtime, salt. Equipment costs, it cost us about twenty-three thousand dollars last year. The state has signed with us to do the, uh, the plowing again, uh, for the exact same dollar amount, ninety-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. We are currently exploring a ten-year agreement. Uh, they have proposed an annual amount of sixty-nine thousand with, uh, an annual escalation of. Potentially one to five percent. Uh, but I think that is something we are going to talk further with the state about and ultimately. Uh, if the city is interested in pursuing it, uh, we would, we would pursue that with the state. Next slide, please, Mike. So here is, uh, here, here are the big sessions. Um. When things changed for us back in March, um, I sat back and thought how lucky we were that COVID started after the snow season. And it really, it really bothered me, concerned me of how can we proceed through the winter if guys are getting sick? We've got a limited number of guys to begin with. Uh, what can we do to address it? So. I held somewhat, I guess I called it a surprise brainstorming session. I called all the guys together on July twenty-third. You can see we're out in the shop in the garage. And I gave him the following scenario. I said, okay, let's assume that it's a week before Christmas, uh, downtown, uptown is very busy. Uh, the two superintendents come into my office and say, we've got nine guys who tested positive for COVID. Uh, it's a Monday this coming, the Thursday, uh, that's coming up, we're gonna get sixteen inches of snow. Which means we're gonna have to run double shifts. We're gonna have to break equipment down over the weekend and haul. And then Christmas has four inches coming at us. And I turned to all the guys and I said, okay, if you're Director of Public Works, what are you doing? You guys are in my chair. How are you gonna handle it? So we went ahead and we split all the guys into groups of eight with the boards and we spent an hour and the guys brainstormed and came up with ideas. And it was a really. Great way of getting the guys to really think about what different things we can do. So it was, I appreciate them and the time they spent doing that. Uh, Mike, next slide. That then brought us to putting, taking their ideas. Um, and we had a meeting then, we had multiple meetings. Uh, with management staff and the supervisors to develop what these modify modifications could be. So we met a couple times in September. Sally Sorthout and myself brought then those changes to our city manager and HR director to review those preliminary changes to get. Their approval with those. We made some modifications. We met a couple times again, uh, in October. With our supervisors and management staff. Then we went ahead and brought the final changes and document to our little local union, LFEA. And from there, myself and Sally went around and met with all of the individual work groups and said, here are the changes for this year. Um, so it was a really. Yeah, a good way just to really think through the things, uh, and really get everybody's different ideas, uh, to really optimize the snow plan. So Mike, next slide, please. So with that, we've made the following changes. Um, we typically have allowed between all of those operating sections, Parks, Forestry, Cemetery. Street Sanitation, Water Sewer, Water Plant, Building Maintenance, Fleet Maintenance, between Engineering. Between all of those sections, we've typically allowed. Nine employees off any given day on vacation. We've gone ahead and reduced that to four. Um, so not many people allowed off. That means their vacation approvals that we typically want to see that bank of vacations spent. Or reduced by May one, we're going to extend that until November one, uh, to allow them to take that bank time off. We've also developed a contingency plan, uh, whereby we're going to use a lot of different personnel in the department. First always will be sanitation, which we use quite frankly on a regular basis. They're really part of all of our storms. If we begin to lose personnel, we're gonna turn to our Parks, Forestry and Supervisor, Parks, Forestry and Public Works Supervisors. They all have their CDLs. They all were maintenance guys beforehand. They know the routes. They're gonna hop into the trucks. Uh, if we still need more people, we're gonna work with Kathy Cerniak and the Community Development Department. To have the building inspectors assist with the snow plan. A couple of the building inspectors actually used to be in Public Works. So they can assist with, a couple of them can assist with the street routes. Uh, after that, we're gonna turn to the superintendents, uh, Bob Bells, Chuck Myers, Dan Martin, Jim Lock if you're a management analyst, and. You may see yours truly in a truck, driving by, I'll honk and wave. Uh, and then from there, we're gonna go to Rec and Croya, their superintendent and program managers. And then. I know I spoke with Carl Waldorf, our Chief Police, and he noted that, uh, he had some guys that could potentially assist as well. So. We're very happy with this. Uh, it gives us some depth. Um, we have detailed our procedures for the vehicle cleaning. And how we're gonna respond to that. All the vacation requests now, we're going through in a very detailed manner to find out exactly. Where the guys may be going and if they're gonna be exposed potentially, how we're reacting to that. Um, so. The only challenge obviously is if we really get hit, uh, the, the community may realize a little bit of a slower response on some of the, the items that we need to do. Whether it be sidewalk plowing or getting the snow off the West Park Ice Pond. We know everything that needs to get done. And we think we've built a pretty good roster here with these, with these options. Mike, next slide. I think that is it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mike?
I just wanted to compliment you on the very detailed thorough plan and all of the thought process that went into developing it. So really, really well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hear the city manager drives a mean plow.
I've been asking him to let me into the big dump for like a year and a half now.
He can stay in our parking lot. That's about it.
Hey Mike, this is Chad. Uh, I was gonna ask you about how we did vis a vis the state reimbursement for Route sixty and, and forty-three. So that was quite good news. So. Well done on that. That, that was a big plus for the community to have those roads plowed by our group. So thanks.
Yes, I, I will, I will tell everybody, um, Matt Brigioni, again, our Street Supervisor, our Forestry Supervisor, Corey Wermar. The winter months, those state routes are on their minds. Last year, they told me, they said they go to bed thinking about sixty and forty-three and they wake up thinking about it. Uh, just because especially Route sixty being a concrete street, concrete streets freeze over much more quickly than the asphalt streets. So we've gotta be, we've gotta pay a lot of attention to make sure sixty, uh, is not icing up. So, thank you.
Hey Mike, uh, Alderman Goshkarin, I have a question for you. Do you think, uh, with the Deer Path Pump Station project moving forward? Is there gonna be a, a, another level of coordination we're gonna have to do with I-DOT and their workers on that project?
So, somewhat. It, it will be minimal, uh, from the standpoint, and I'll, and I'll just share with everybody, the latest update, the tree removal has begun. They have told us that pond excavations, uh, is going to begin after the holidays. But what we expect with that is simply flaggers on Deer Path. So there'll be flagging in semis and flagging out. There will be minimal delays on Deer Path. Um, but I, I don't foresee any significant challenges as it relates to the snow program. We obviously will continue. To plow the sidewalks. We're just gonna have to work in the sandbox together, uh, and I'm sure, I'm sure we will and, and not have any problems.
Uh, Director Thomas, as long as you brought up, uh, the issue of Deer Path. I hate to take you by surprise, but can you sort of give us the good news about the replanting of the trees that rather than chopping them, a lot of them down? Um, I just think that's a, a great story to highlight, and this might be the only time we get an opportunity.
For the Deer Path forty-one project?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I'm going to do this by memory. I believe the state is reimbursing the city for approximately six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Sixty of that approximately is to plant numerous trees around the pump station as well as the golf course. I think we are going to have extra money. We may plant some additional trees along Deer Path as well. Uh, but sixty thousand dollars is what was developed with Chuck Myers, uh, the golf course architect. Our Park Supervisor, our Forestry Supervisor, they put that entire budget together and. That money will go towards, towards that. And I, I, I believe sixty thousand dollars will, will get us pretty far.
And I'll, you know, just jump in, uh, to Alderman Rummel's point. I know we had a conversation with Chuck Myers last week. And, uh, Alderman Rummel had inquired about some mature oak trees, uh, on the property and, um. You know, Chuck was able to, was able to report that we're actually, uh, working with some, a contractor to transplant some of the mature oats elsewhere in the community. So we're able to save them. Give them another home, uh, and so really pleased that we were able to do that. And I know, um, Chuck's also, I think, been in contact. Uh, with Lake Forest Open Lands to see if, uh, they'd be willing to take some of the trees as well.
Right, right.
He just popped up on the screen, so I'll let him explain it better than I can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, so, um, uh, just to correct one thing, sorry, uh, they're not mature oats. They, they're, they're relatively small. I don't want anyone to think that we're, uh, moving a twenty-six inch tree or anything like that. Uh, the largest one is probably about ten inches though. So it's a pretty good size oak. Uh, that's in the way of the pond. Uh, most of these are in the way of the two ponds. So we have a company that is coming out. Uh, it's better if we can wait as long as possible, uh, for the benefit of the trees, uh, with a more successful transplant. Uh, so we'll be, um, taking a couple trees and moving them into the different spots on the golf course. Uh, and then we have worked with, uh, Peter Gordon with Lake Forest Open Lands, uh, and they are going to be taking some offsite as well. So those are all oats that are being moved, smaller oats, but, uh, I think it, we should have pretty good success with transplanting those.
Thank you. I just think that's a great story, you know, um, rather than destroying oats, which are such lovely, lovely trees, to be able to save them and transplant them. It just. It just shows where our values are as a community and as a city. And, and so thank you to the staff for making that a priority.
Alderman Bushman here, if I could, uh, Director Thomas, uh, compliment you on the planning that, uh, has gone into, uh, the snow program. Recognizing, uh, you know, the normal unknowns of what the weather's gonna be, how much snowfall, how frequently and, uh, where it's gonna impact. But, uh, added to that, the COVID, and, uh, I'm surprised when you did have your brainstorm sessions and asked people. What they would advise the, uh, Director of Public Works to do, uh, how many said, uh, retire now? Uh, but glad they didn't say that. I'm glad you're with us to continue. Uh, but, uh, we do recognize that this is difficult. Because you deal with so many unknowns and with the, the layer of COVID nineteen and its possible impact on the availability of the personnel. So. I think the other message we need to get across is if it is a tough winter, uh, and a tough pandemic surge. People have to be patient. People have to be understanding, uh, because with all the miracles you can't perform, Mike, there's some maybe you cannot. Uh, so we recognize the limitations, but, uh, I know at Public Works Committee, we, we talked about having the necessary equipment there. And I know you. Adding a piece to make more equipment available for the forty-three sixty, uh, uh, plowing. And, uh, you know, hopefully something does come together for the long term because certainly in the experience, limited experience we've had, it's worked out nicely for our community. To be able to take on that responsibility for forty-three and sixty. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Mike. Um, and Mayor, uh, that concludes my report. I'll just echo your comments and wishing everybody a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Uh, Members of the public can provide public comment by either the Q and A function or by calling eight four seven, eight one zero, three six four three. Uh, we will wait a minute here to see if, uh, there are any callers or, uh, people who've, uh, sent in any questions.
Mayor, there are no callers.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is committee reports. Uh, and, uh, we have a couple. Uh, first, we have a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chair Morris, uh, would you like to introduce the next item?
Sure. Uh, and of course, it's my pleasure to introduce, uh, the Gordon Community Center. It, I was thinking about Jennifer's work, uh, up at the train station and, um. I haven't been in there, but I assume Gordon has some representation in there, but it's a, it's a major nonprofit asset of the community. And tonight. We have Kate Rothen, who's President of the Board, and the Nick Bafield, who's the Finance Chair, and Amy Rigliato. So I'd like to turn it over to them. We had a chance to review their financial, uh, budget, uh, about, um, maybe a month ago now. Um, and they've done a remarkable job of holding, uh, Gordon, um, up during the pandemic and keeping it, uh. Very viable from a financial standpoint. So Kate, if you're ready to take over, I'll turn it to you.
Sure. Thank, thank you so much, um, Alderman Morris for that introduction. Um, I, I don't think you got, all can see me. I was gonna joke and have a Santa hat. Alderman Rummel, you talked about, um, having a bouncer in front of the Lake Forest Train Station. I actually was that bouncer this last weekend. And I had a Santa hat on, so, um, yeah, I was, we, we have been able to participate in that, uh, Lake Forest, uh, Train Station, and we were honored to be a part of it. And it has been going very well and, and thank you for including us in that. I know this is a budget meeting and I will, um, I know it, you all sit in these long meetings, so I'm gonna pass it on to. Our team. I'm very proud to be a part of this meeting tonight. We're very proud of Gordon and to be a part of this special community, Lake Forest. During this global pandemic, I think our community, Lake Forest, has done an outstanding job. I was getting an opportunity to listen to Mike talk before. And what he's doing preparing with the snowfall and what's gonna be going forward. And I hope Gordon has, uh, done a good job. You all have. During this, we've had to pivot and do a lot of creative things as all of the different organization in town have done. But knowing that this is a finance meeting, I'm going to pass it on to Nick Bafield and Amy Wagliardo to move forward. And share with you our budget. We've worked really hard on it. We're proud of what we're presenting tonight. And without further ado, I'm going to pass it to Nick and Amy.
Great, thanks, Kate. Um, so, um, this is Nick Bafield. I'm the City Director and Finance Chair. Um, so this is the third budget cycle I've been.
This is the third budget cycle I've been through with Amy and her team. And I have to admit, I'm very impressed with the thoughtful approach and their thorough analysis. The key to all of this is the assumptions made due to COVID and all the uncertainty. And Amy did a great job on that. It's not Pollyanna, it's not wishful thinking, it's very reasonable and purposely conservative. I will say it also assumes the use of the endowment that has built up very nicely over the past years. If there's ever a time to use it, it is now. And the full board is in concurrence on that. The process started back in September. We had a Gordon team review, Amy did. Then we had a chair briefing that I was part of. Then we had a full finance committee. We had two full board discussions on it. Talked with Jed and Jason, a few others in a meeting. And the key to all this is that the board unanimously approved this budget. So that, that was important for all of us. A final note, because I know you've seen all the slides there in PowerPoint and Amy will take you through that briefly. One of the assumptions is that shows no salary or bonus increases for 2021. And the full board has discussed this. And with any improvements or changes positively in the financial position, this is the first thing we will address and take care of. Because the team is critical and they are awesome. Wanted to give a quick shout out to Karen McCabe for all of her hard work on the numbers. She's joined the team. And of course, Amy, who is jack of all trades and her attention to detail and being financially and fiscal responsible. And the right person at the right time for us. So Amy, take it away and welcome through.
Nick, if I may, we are not finding Amy on the attendee list. Is it possible that either you or Kate have heard from her? Cause we're, we don't see her.
Oh. Well, she was there. She's, and she just texted saying, I'm here.
She said she's here and listening. Maybe, maybe it's, we can't have three of us on to share the screen. If you want to delete me, I'm totally fine with that. Is that possible?
Thank you. Yep, we'll take a look at that.
Thought she was on earlier when I looked at the.
I thought she was, yeah, I thought she was too. Well. Maybe it's Jed, maybe you could just kind of highlight some of the assumptions that, that you and the board made in trying to get through the, the coming year with all of the challenges. It's something you can do off the top of your head. You know, we had a, we have a slide deck there. If we bring that up, we can just go through it quickly. There we go. I think we can move on to the next one. So, well, classic, we'll, you know, put the, it's probably the agenda. We put our mission and vision. So we'll continue past all that. And you can read that at your, at your leisure. Let's keep going. All right. And so in 2020, just like Kate had mentioned. It took, it took a lot of pivoting because everything we do is onsite. And therefore there was lots of changes that needed to be made. We're able, we were able to reopen a bit in the summer, the drop-in center. But again, even that created problems because of the number of people we could have or not have. I will say personally, I was there for the blood drive twice. And the Red Cross was very impressed. And quite frankly, that, that is precisely what a community center should be doing. And it was filled to the brim and we had every, you know, they had every slot filled. You want to keep going? Next? And so what happened was, um, you know, we had our rental and program revenue, you know, way down. The first two months were gangbusters for us. And then, then, you know, the proverbial hit the fan. But we've been very fortunate because of incredible donations from the community. Amy would have the numbers for that and was ready to speak to that. We got a PPP loan and which was fantastic and helped us keep everyone on staff and it's now been forgiven. We had the business interruption grant. We had a restoration grant for the daycare. So there are all these positive things that happen for us through hard work and, and. And then we also utilized our endowment draw. We had an endowment draw built into the budget from the previous year, but that was to expand and really take off. Because we're in such, you know, we're just on such a positive momentum. But we decided we obviously needed it to keep ourselves going. So our cash flow turned out extremely good for the year. So if we go to the next slide, we'll get into some of the assumptions. Well, these are the highlights of some of the things, uh, the different programs, the next slide. Amy was going to talk about how important it is for a community center to drive economic recovery. And she had pulled some information from Americans for the Arts. In general, when you start doing, getting people community-based activities, there's a ripple effect and a multiplier effect for the money. Next slide. So here's our key things, which is assumptions, which was we have six months of current level activity and restrictions. I E., you know, virtual. And then a gradual back to normal, starting, say, in July. The current staffing remains in place and as I mentioned, zero salary increases. Though we certainly, that is be the first thing we'd address. And then we had an approved, looked at and approved an endowment draw. We're budgeting it at 90% of the potential amount that we could take. And we always take money for the Hughes Endowment that is built into it, that, that's their expectation. Given the drop-in center, we have instituted a temporary 20% increase there. Which we reached out to all the people who were doing it. And they said, we get it, we understand. We said, we don't want to have this long-term, but this is what we have to do given the restriction. Cause we wanted to make sure we had a break-even budget. Next slide. So I wouldn't even look at the variance. That's just, you know, sort of, let's look at what we expected and then what the 2021 budget. As you can see, that net income, it's all about the cash flow because of the PPP, the B I G, the, the different grants that we, we received. So we are heading into 2021 in excellent shape. And our charitable contributions remain strong. And our, we expect our net income from operations, even with this scaled back program to be at break-even, which is exactly what you'd expect a nonprofit to do. And I think that's about it, if I'm not mistaken. Well, Nick, that's a nice job. I would just comment that the, the endowment has grown, I think it's 5 million between the two funds that you have, which has been just a very steady, comfortable growth every year. Year in and year out to get the, to that level of an endowment. And that's been a big cushion for the organization, so. Yeah, no, Jed, you're absolutely right. I sit on that investment committee and the team that, that's doing this is awesome. And this year grew very, very nicely. And we, we worked very closely with Lake Forest Bank and Trust and their investment team there. And that's, you're right, it's just tipped over 5 million, which is awesome, so. Maybe we should leave it for questions.
Alderman Morris, it's Alderman Weber. And I just wanted to thank the staff at the Drop-In Center. I'm there three days a week with my youngest. And they have had some serious challenges, obviously with COVID being a daycare operation. I just want to compliment them on their ability to react quickly and put in these safety procedures and protocols. And while I really miss chatting with the staff at pickup and drop-off, I appreciate their sensitivity and have just felt very safe and just wanted to thank them for all of their hard work because they are working really hard.
Good, yes.
I was just going to ask whether that 20% increase in fees at the Drop-In Learning Center may be caused some hardship to some families or whether families had to drop out and weren't able to participate at increased rates. Is anyone aware of that?
Well, that, I don't believe that increase has gone into, into effect just yet. It's, it's anticipated and planned. And, yeah, we, we built into it that there would be some, some people dropping out or tailing off. The 20% increase, you know, it's like from $10 to 12. So it's, yeah, so it's, you know, it's doable. It's not something we want to do, but it's doable.
Got it. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions? If not, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Gordon 2021 budget.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
And Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Ed.
Have a good meeting.
And I'd like to congratulate the entire team at Gordon. The last time there was a recession, Gordon went bankrupt.
Right, you helped save it.
So, and, uh, you know, we were successful at getting it, getting it out of the ICU. And then some really dedicated people have taken the ball and, and all the way down the field. And it's just so, so gratifying to see the financial wherewithal that, that the organization has now. It's outstanding. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2020 tax levy. This is a final reading. And it's going to be presented by Elizabeth Hollup, Finance Director.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me? Yes, great. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Recognizing this is the fifth time you've seen the proposed 2020 tax levy in about six or seven weeks. We did not plan a presentation this evening. The detailed tax levy schedules are again included in your packet. And I will be happy to answer any questions you have about the levy. But as you know, you granted first reading to the ordinance in November. And we're requesting second and final approval of the tax levy ordinance this evening.
Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Well, approve, so move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag? Thank you. Alderman Gashkarian? Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
And Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item, next item on the agenda is a report from the Personnel Compensation and Administration Committee to recommend approval of the health insurance contract renewals for calendar year 2021, presented by Tishai Tomar, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I got thrown out for a minute, so sorry about the little delay there. Um, I'm going to share my screen with you. Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, good. I am here this evening to talk to you about the exciting subject of health insurance renewals. PCA Committee reviewed all of this in great detail on November 17th at their meeting. Just as a little bit of brief background, we've been self-insured with our medical and dental insurance for many years. We do work with insurance consultant, Peter Wright. And we also have an employee benefit committee that we work with, who we review coverages. And that helps us contain our costs. The other thing that working with the committee does is help with our labor contracts and our union negotiations. We're very transparent. They have people who sit on this employee benefit committee. So they really see what's going on and they're very happy with our coverages. So that, that's been very positive for us. This evening, we're recommending that we retain professional benefit administrators or PBA as our administrators of our claims and our policies. That we retain the Cigna P P O network, that we retain Optum Health Transplant Coverage and Asset Health Wellness Services. I'm going to talk about Asset Health more in just a couple of minutes. We're recommending that we change our stop-loss coverage from Voya to Sun Life. As you can see on the slide, Voya, who has, we've been with them since 2009 approximately. They did not have the low bid. Prior to being with Voya, we were with Sun Life. They're both very quality companies. But we're recommending that we change to Sun Life based on their bid this year. In addition, we're recommending that we increase our deductible from $150,000 per claim to $170,000 per claim. That saves us about $116,000 in premiums. And we figure that we can have almost five claims that go over that $150,000 before we don't have any savings anymore from the premiums. However, typically we have historically had about two claims per year that go over that $150,000 current deductible. So we feel pretty comfortable by making that change. We also have healthy reserves. Since 2015, they've increased by 1.7 million. And that's in part due to our conservative budgeting for large claim risks and also to the benefit committee and the changes that they've recommended that we make to retain or maintain our costs or keep them as low as possible. And then I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our Think Healthy Wellness Program. One of the recommendations is to renew the contract with Asset Health for one more year. And our Think Healthy Program is what runs on that website that they provide. I've put a slide up here which shows what the four categories are. Get Moving, Wellbeing Prevention, and Eat Healthy. Employees can earn either $150, $175, or $200. Employees can earn either $150, $175, or $200 each year. That goes into their flexible spending account, medical spending account, or into their deferred compensation plan by doing things that think healthy. I know the PCA Committee got, was very interested in this program. So I thought I would pull up, oh, and it logged me off. Sorry, let me log in again for a second. And show you just what the website looks like. Now, we just started our new plan year this year, this month, sorry, seven days ago. So there's not much on here just yet. But this is what the thing looks like, the website looks like. And we have the different categories. So under prevention, we can do things like have blood pressure checks, cholesterol screenings, dental exams, routine physicals. And we have seen a great uptick in the number of people who are having their routine physicals done, which is great because that's what you can catch things early potentially if there are issues. Then under well-being, you can donate blood. There's wellness newsletters that are on the site. There, we've done financial planning seminars. We've done various online courses on here. And if you look at the courses that Asset Health provides for us, they tend to run along the lines of what we see in the way of claims, the types of claims that we're having. So employees can earn points by watching these, going through these little webinar courses. Also, we've had things like Fifth Third in town, Fifth Third Bank in town. As part of their community outreach program, they have been doing classes for us onsite, little lunch and learn type things. And they've done things on such things as how to finance and purchase your first home, improving your credit rating, HELOC versus second mortgage, things like that, that help employees perhaps be more educated and learn, relieve some of the stress that might surround some of those items in their lives. We've also, during COVID, we started having Linda Porter, who's a therapist that works closely with the police department. She's been doing lunch and learns for us on all the various stressors surrounding what everybody's been going through, whether it's, you know, suddenly everybody's working from home and trying to share the same Wi-Fi, whether it's trying to juggle work and kids learning at home, whether it's not being able to be with your families at the holidays. In fact, we have heard doing one, I think, on the 17th of this month, too, just because of all the stress around the holidays. So those have been very popular. We also have eating healthy. We've had the hospital has come in. Of course, this is all changed this year because of COVID, but they've come in and they, their nutritionist comes in and does lunchtime lectures for us. They've done lectures on just preparing healthy, how to pack a healthy lunch, how to cook healthy, just general nutrition. They've also talked about nutrition focusing around exercise, for example, for runners and that sort of thing. And the fun part about that one is their chef from the hospital always prepares lunch for us. And they're really very tasty. So that's, it's always kind of fun. Get Moving is our most popular aspect of the wellness program. And we've done things in the past, like the most recent one that we were able to have was a bags tournament. We've done dodgeball, kickball. We also give employees points who, if they come and cheer on their fellow employees because not everybody can physically do some of this stuff. So we want to make sure it's equal opportunity as much as possible. Each year also, we have challenges. We do three challenges per year. They typically focus one around some kind of stress thing. So we've done mindfulness. We've done take five to focus. We've done stretching, getting up and moving and stretching, different things like that. We've had eat the rainbow, so you can eat all the colors of the rainbow and your veggies and fruits. We were going to have this year a hydration challenge. We've put that off to '21 because we substituted instead with the stay-at-home orders, we substituted an additional walking challenge because we thought that would be helpful. And they actually, Asset Health actually created one for us, especially for us with a COVID theme. So we started in New York City where Broadway, the lights went out on Broadway. We went to Seattle where you couldn't get Starbucks coffee in store. We went to LA where, you know, the movie industry shut down. We went to Dallas where the sports teams couldn't have people in the stands. Worked our way up to Kansas City where they finally were able to open restaurants a little bit and you could eat your favorite barbecue. Ending in Lake Forest where there was a vaccine created and everything is moving forward and back to normal. Now, who knows when that will actually be, but it was kind of fun. And then in the fall, we had a spectacular walking challenge. And we walked to various haunted sites across the United States. I was actually surprised when I pulled it up and discovered that Lake Forest was in this spectacular with one of our mansions on the east side of town. They actually made it as one of the haunted places in the spectacular challenge. We've also hiked the national parks, walked the wonders of the world. And in 2021, we are going to do a beat the boss challenge to see, each week we'll have a different boss tracking their steps and we'll see who can beat the boss during that. So it's always kind of fun. And we have a lot of participation in that. And this year, we actually allowed our seasonal employees who aren't on our health insurance, but they, they wanted to get in on the act. So we got them hooked up with this program. And while they didn't get the, the points to earn money for their deferred comp or anything like that, they were entered into a drawing and we did some raffle prizes for them so that they could feel a part of it as well. You can also, on the site, do your, set your own wellness goals. They, the most popular ones revolve around nutrition, but also then around exercise and that sort of thing. So we're trying to make this so everybody can in some way participate. We also have, Asset Health has a conversion chart. So if you like to ride a bicycle or if you ride an exercise bike rather than walking, there are ways that you can convert those to steps so you can participate in these challenges. When we first came forward three years ago with this Asset Health website proposal, the PCA Committee, particularly Alderman Reisenberg, former Alderman Reisenberg and former Mayor Lansing challenged us, come back after the third year of the contract and show that the program was having an impact. And we do think that it is having an impact. As I mentioned earlier, our number of routine physicals are up and that is a really good thing. But we've also seen that since 2015, our large claims below $100,000 have shown a declining trend. And that we feel that in part due to the improvements in the overall health of our employees and as evidenced in the preliminary Think Healthy Wellness Program data that we're seeing. So that's, that's a little bit about the program. What we're asking for the council to approve tonight is to give the city manager authority to sign contracts to retain professional benefit administrators for the administration and billing services of our plan, to retain the preferred provider network administration with Cigna through PBA, to move the stop-loss coverage to Sun Life and to increase the deductible to $170,000 from $150,000, to renew with Optum Health Transplant Coverage, which is a component of stop-loss coverage, and to retain Asset Health Services for one year for our Think Healthy Wellness Program. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hi, Dushay. This is Jim Preschlag. Thanks a lot for the presentation. And thank you for your many, many years of service to our community. We're going to be really sad to see you go, but it's a well-deserved retirement. And thanks for all your, your love and care on the staff and the HR-related issues. So thank you so much for that. I'm assuming this is close to one of your last meetings? Is that, or kind of what's the date?
Not quite. I mean, end of April, so I'll be back for more money again.
Okay. And so you can never say thank you real loud. So thank you so much. I'm sorry if I didn't see this in the packet. I know we've talked about it in the past. But how would you categorize our benefits, just from a competitive perspective across the market and other cities, either within Illinois and the North Shore or in the District? I mean, do you feel like it's pretty competitive and plus for people to come? Or is it on par? I'm just kind of curious how, how we rank up and just from your experience, just what it means to folks in terms of getting the best talent and all that.
Well, we do have a very excellent benefit package. There's no doubt about it. Having said that, we are competitive with other municipalities. We aren't really out of line. That's typically, one of the things that you see is that municipalities and public sector tends to have decent benefits. But we really do have an excellent benefit package. I think it's definitely a draw for attracting employees. There's no question about it. I also, as I mentioned earlier, having the benefit committee and the way we work things, we've had that committee since, well, we actually received an award from the Northwest Municipal Conference for it in 2005. So we've probably had it since about 2003, 2004, something like that. That has been immeasurably helpful when it comes to our collective bargaining situation. They, they understand, as I mentioned, we're very transparent. They understand. They know they have a good plan. They want to keep that good plan. And so they're willing to allow us to make certain plan design changes if we need to in order to keep it. So I think it, it does definitely help us attract good people. And it is a very nice plan. So hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Alderman Bushman.
If I could ask a couple of questions. First, the Think Healthy Program looks like it's an amazing program and something that is a benefit to both the employees and the employer. You mentioned that it's not available to seasonal employees, except now you're trying to do it on a modified basis. But other than the seasonal employees, is it something that is available to all other employees of the city?
Yes, it is. And we don't, we don't have 100% participation, but we do have, let's see, let me look at my numbers here. We had about 88% of our employees participate in some manner in the program this past year. 2020 was a tough year for us. We had to scale back a lot of the things that we would normally do. And people who ordinarily would do walk-a-thons or marathons anywhere, those are all canceled this year. So it was a really tough year. We had to sort of adapt and increase some of the points for certain things that, you know, we might not have given as many points for before, but they were doable in 2020, whereas some of the other stuff wasn't. So it was kind of a challenging year for people to get their points.
Well, hopefully they realize, especially going through this year, the importance of health and doing the right things to stay healthy, recognizing the challenges. Did have a couple of questions on the changes you're talking about in the stop-loss coverage. We talked about going from the 150 to 170,000 retention level. How is that compared in the marketplace to other comparable employer-type entities like Lake Forest? Is that in the middle range or are we more aggressive in our retention amount? Do you know?
You know, Peter Wright is, I believe, in the audience, and he would probably be the better person to answer that on a more global scale. If we could promote him up to.
It was just more of a question, are we out of the ordinary or are we in the ordinary, so to speak, in that realm?
I'm guessing we're really in the ordinary, but again, I, I don't know that for certain.
Peter's on the call.
Hi, yeah, this is Peter, if I'm, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Bushman and everyone else. Dushay, to answer your question, specifically Alderman, the city has currently $150,000 specific deductible and the concept is to move to $170,000 deductible. During the course of making our recommendation, not only did we look, we look at the actual cost of claims between those levels, which projected is $43,000 approximately. We also looked at actuarial studies from both Sun Life as well as Voya and other resources, including our partner firms, to find basically what's the recommended level at the city's size. The answer is approximately $190,000 to $200,000 is thought of as the ideal deductible for this size case in today's market. And that has to do with the frequency of claims. So for a group, the size of the city with approximately 665 participants, you would expect to see a deductible, a specific deductible per person of approximately $175,000 to $200,000. So frankly, the city has actually been more on the conservative level, which is part of the reason for the recommendation. Today, based on the pricing we received, it's more expensive to actually buy insurance for that level of deductible than simply to insure it ourselves. So it's akin to, if you're buying homeowner's insurance and you want a zero deductible policy, it's actually more expensive than simply paying the difference in deductible for reasons of cost, basically administrative cost. So frankly, the city is right about in the middle. Some groups would probably lean towards taking higher deductibles, but since we are a municipal entity and very cognizant of our cash flow risks, we tend to recommend a little bit lower deductibles.
Okay, that was very helpful. It seems, as you mentioned, others may go as high as 200,000 retention level. And if we have good reserves and good experience, you know, certainly if you can save money there, assuming without any significant exposure, underlying exposure, it's something maybe we should continue to think about. The other question is somewhat, not related, but on the same topic, where we had the experience with Voya since 2009, I think you've mentioned. And during the renewal, they wanted to raise the rates by some 10%. And when you put it out for bids, Sun came in at like 16% lower. Why was Voya where they were in their quotes versus Sun Life? Seems like there's quite a bit of difference in the quotes.
That's an excellent question. And in fact, it was a bit of a puzzle to myself and my analyst working on the case. And really, we say puzzle because normally you would expect, since all of these actuarial, excuse me, all of the underwriters tend to use common actuarial tables developed by a number of firms, including Millman and others, which is a large actuarial firm used for even our property casualty pool, the Irma Property Casualty Pool. But in any event, you would expect that the pricing would typically be fairly close. You are correct. In discussions with Voya, they clearly indicated that they felt that, number one, the city needed to raise its deductible. And number two, that they admitted not being competitive. And number two, that they admitted not being competitive at, for example, $150,000 specific deductible. In fact, with the bids that we received, including bids from other carriers, once we go to $200,000 deductibles, the difference in pricing between the carriers became very small. In fact, if we were to go as high as a $200,000 deductible, the savings by going to Sun Life is much smaller. All right, so if the city were in a position, and we don't necessarily advocate this right now because you're at $150,000 deductible, if the city was willing and it was wise to take on that added risk, which I don't think it's wise at this time because of COVID, we probably would have been stronger in recommending potentially renewing with Voya. So, a second reasoning behind this is frankly, I think that Voya has been the insurance carrier for the city for a number of years. And potentially, from time to time, an underwriter may think that they need to try to get some more premium. So, I think frankly, Voya was just not competitive at that $150,000 level. And hopefully, should we need to, you know, go back to Voya again, it's still a very good market, very good relationship. We have had discussions with them regarding the city's relationship. It's very solid. So, I think this is really a recommendation after several years. The last time we bid Sun Life was also competitive, not quite as competitive as Voya. I think in this case, Voya is just tightening their underwriting more so than Sun Life is, as well as other markets that were close to Sun Life.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions on this matter? I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendations from the HR Director.
So moved.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschak?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dushay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending the city code relating to real estate transfer taxes and to approve a waiver of the 60-day filing requirement to Joan Alley of 727 North McKinley Road Unit 200. Wait first reading and grant final approval. This will be presented by Diane Hall, Assistant Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I do have a presentation. Okay, I will be providing a summary of proposed changes to the city code regarding real estate transfer tax and granting a waiver for a request from 727 North McKinley. Next slide, please. This slide is an overview of recommended changes in a summary format. Currently, the code has requirements for both buyer and seller. These are in individual sections for each of the buyer and seller. Staff is recommending consolidating these requirements under one section and simplifying the language for better understandability. Included in the code are authorized variances. The current language has maybe granted upon showing hardship not caused by the taxpayer. Staff is recommending changing this to granted upon circumstances not caused by the taxpayer. This will give staff greater flexibility in reviewing these requests. The code does provide authority for granting variances. Currently, the city manager has the authority to grant variances from one year to two years. And the PCA Committee has the authority to grant variances for two years up to three years. Staff is recommending moving the one to two-years authority to the Finance Director and the two years up to three years to the city manager. It must be noted that the maximum refund is $2,000. And currently, department heads do have the authority up to $5,000 for expenditures. And the city manager also has the authority up to $5,000 to grant waivers. Currently, in the code for time to request a variance is 60 days after the sale date. Staff is recommending moving to 12 months after the sale date. This will give residents a more time to provide the paperwork and to request a variance for any requirements. Currently, in the city code, under the section, the PCA Committee does not have authority to grant waivers. Staff is recommending adding a section to give them the authority to grant waivers to the city code under the real estate transfer tax. Next slide. Staff has received a request for a waiver from the resident at 727 North McKinley. The request was for a one-year requirement. And this request was received after the 60-day deadline. If not for the 60-day requirement, the resident would have qualified for a variance. Under current city code, the PCA Committee does not have the authority to grant the waiver. The PCA Committee, after discussions, is recommending granting a waiver of the 60-day requirement and is requesting the City Council approve the authorization of the refund of the real estate transfer tax. This is coming to the City Council because the transaction occurred during the city code where the PCA Committee did not have the authority to grant the waiver. Next slide. So, staff is requesting waiver of the first reading and grant final approval of amendments to the city code relating to real estate transfer tax and approving the waiver of the 60-day filing requirement for the resident at 727 North McKinley. I would be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
And I would just comment, when we reviewed this, it was clear that it was confusing and it was challenging for residents to pick up on this opportunity if they were moving within the community. So, just it made sense to extend this from the 60 days to the longer period of time for the benefit of the residents.
Question of clarification. The effective date on the change, and I'm thinking specifically of the 60 days to the one year, will it be retroactive? So, recognizing we've had quite a bit of activity in real estate transfers, will those that have sales that have already occurred get the benefit of the one year going forward?
This will be from this day going forward. It's too difficult to go backwards. But mostly, the 60-day is to request a variance to the code. So, most residents do get their request in on time. So, we've only had one that has not met that 60-day requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I have a circle head tag.
A question I have for you, Diane, is how is the $2,000 maximum credit calculated? In terms of what is the, how does someone determine how much they're entitled to a rebate?
It is based on the real estate transfer tax paid for the purchase of the new home. So, if in its, if they paid like $5,000 for the real estate transfer tax, the maximum amount they would receive is $2,000. But if they paid, say, $1,400 as their real estate transfer tax payment, the refund would be $1,400. So, it's based on the actual tax paid for their new home.
I'm sorry, it's dollar for dollar up to $2,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Weber? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I did, thank you. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing then, Diane, is that we don't run into this very often. Is that correct?
Correct. We receive possibly six requests a year for variances.
And so, we're making a change to the code based on a limited number of requests? I mean, I guess I'm just confused on why we're moving in that direction.
The language in the code is very confusing because there's one section for buyers, one section for sellers, and is trying to make the interpretation of the code much easier and simpler, and also to try and move the authority more to staff versus the city manager and then the PCA Committee. Since we're, it's $2,000 transactions, where department heads have the authority up to $5,000. So, it's simplifying the language and just trying to make a better process and easier for the residents.
I just have a question about how we're approaching this tonight from a procedural perspective. First of all, and I've said this before, I don't know why we call out ordinances on item number six, and then here we are changing an ordinance in item number two. I'm just thinking, again, that we should put ordinances under ordinances because I think they're incredibly important and/or get rid of number six on our agenda because it just seems to me that this would belong under item number six. So, I don't know why it's here, first of all. But more importantly, you know, maybe that's inconsequential, but I just think if we're having ordinances called out, then we should put it under there.
And that's a fair point, Alderman Rommel, and certainly something to take note of. I think the reason it had been placed under the committee reports is because it had been specifically reviewed by the PCA Committee, and this came forward as a recommendation from the PCA Committee. But certainly, your point is noted, and in the future, happy to ensure ordinance revisions are reflected under that section of the agenda.
Thank you. I truly appreciate that. I think it's important. Secondly, I would like to see this item divided into two separate parts. I would like to consider amending the ordinance separate from granting a waiver to a specific person. Otherwise, it looks to me like we tied this change into one specific instance, which isn't what it is and isn't what it should be when we're dealing with ordinances. I don't think you make laws to apply to a single person. And the way this is set out, it could be interpreted that way. So, I would make a motion to separate these two items and take separate votes on them. I don't think it will require an awful lot, any renewed discussion. I just think procedurally, it's a better way to handle this.
Alderman Rommel, if we do that, my recommendation is to act on the waiver first. The reason being that the ordinance is actually changing the procedure and the waiver is being granted based on today's ordinance, which is that the City Council would hear this as opposed to passing the ordinance, and then this would have to go back to the PCA. So, it's not a problem to bifurcate it. So, you know, anyone can make a motion for part of it. Vote on that and then vote on the second.
Perfect. I don't care which you do first. I would just separate the two. So, I would make a motion then that we approve the, you wanted the specific one approved first and then the ordinance, correct? So, that would be my motion, that we consider approving a waiver of the 60-day filing requirement to Joan Alley at 727 McKinley Road Unit 200.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye, good idea.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschak?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber? Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
And then I would make another, I guess, motion is the time for consideration of an ordinance amending the city code relating to real estate transfer taxes.
Second, roll call vote, please. Oh, sorry, second. Alderman Gashkarian, roll call vote, please.
For clarification, that would be to waive first reading and grant final approval. Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschak?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber? Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Thanks for the presentation. I think the need for change to the ordinance speaks off where we just had the entire City Council of Lake Forest debating a $2,000 matter. I think that speaks for the need for a change all by itself. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 15 of them tonight, so bear with me as I read through them. First, approve the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next City Council meeting. Second, approval of the November 16th, 2020 City Council meeting minutes. Third, approval of the check register for the period of October 24th through November 2020. Fourth, approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring firefighter/paramedic David Tishanai. Fifth, approval of ordinances abating 2020 tax levies for various general obligation, alternate revenue bond issues. This is final reading. Sixth, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and ordinances adopting new fees. Final reading. Seventh, approval of a one-year contract renewal with interdev, information technology support in the amount of $124,000. Eighth, consideration of an ordinance amending the city of Lake Forest liquor code to increase the number of licenses available in Class E1 and 2, first reading and if appropriate, final level. I'll point out that's liquor license for the new hotel out in Conway. Nine is authorization to advance fiscal year '22 capital expense and approval to award a contract to Lowman Quitno Golf Architects for creation of final construction documents for Deerpath Golf Course as associated with the IDOT Stormwater Project at Deerpath at the 41 in the amount of $24,600. Tenth, approval of a change order to the agreement with Black Engineering Company, Inc. to provide additional engineering design services for the Ringwood Road Ravine Project in the amount of $18,300. Number 11, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to replace existing Section 152.30 of the city code with the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance approved by the County of Lake on October 13th, 2020, with its adoption by reference. Twelve, consideration of a staff recommendation to award the contractor GIS services to MGP, Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $208,514 for calendar year 2021. Thirteenth, award of a bid to Illinois by Pump in the amount of $7,908 plus a 10% contingency of $7,890 for a total of $86,798 for the Lake Forest Water Treatment Plant rebuild project. Fourteenth, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. And fifteenth, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, also first reading and required final approval. Are there any items that any council member would like to remove, have removed, or take it separately? Or are there comments? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to all of the 15 on the vice items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, city?
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschak? Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman. Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Uh, uh, next item on our agenda, additional items for discussion, comments by council members. Uh, any comments, uh, or observations that anybody on the council would like to, uh, to make at this time? Okay, hearing none, uh, I would just, uh, want to give everybody wonderful holidays and a prayer for twenty twenty-one to be a vast improvement over twenty twenty in many, many ways. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, a little break here and city government action, but, uh, hopefully, a wonderful holiday season for everybody in spite of some of the restrictions we're living under. Uh, with that, I would entertain, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, I hope to see you all in person soon in the chambers.
I second that.
For your first live meeting. Yes.
I'm still waiting to say farewell to the former Alderman that we never properly said goodbye to also, so a lot to look forward to in twenty twenty-one.
I have a lot of catching up to do. Uh, okay, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for the year.
So moved, happy new year.
Happy new year, everyone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Happy new year.
Yeah.
Happy new year.
Happy holidays. Bye-bye.
Bye.
See ya.